To the November 9, 2023 Planning Board. We will have a call to order and a roll call, please, Florim.
Madam Chair.
Present.
Vice Chair Finnerty.
Present.
The Secretary is here. Board Member Catalinato.
Present.
Board Member Mutu.
Present.
Board Member Neely.
Present.
Board Member Fulham.
Present.
We have a quorum. We're all here.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Do we have any minutes, Florim?
Yes, we do. October 26. So that would get us up to date.
Great. Motion to accept.
Motion.
Motion by Dennis, seconded by Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed extension, seven in favor. Anthony, you wanted to take number one and then number...
Number one, then number nine. Kevin's representing both.
Okay, one and nine.
No, you can wait, Kevin. Actually, I'm going to do it first and then... So the board can see, first one is Hampton Code of State. This is a pre-submission conference report. This is to legalize at the corner here of Canoe Place Road, Fanning Avenue in Hampton Bays. It's R-20 zoning on this side of the road and then the other side along the water. It's a resort waterfront. This had a pre-existing CO, this structure here. I'll try to give you a street view. Could you take a look? Had a pre-existing CO for eight motel units sometime in history. The motel units were converted to co-ops condos, which is a special exception used in the town code. It's permitted as a special exception. Kevin was retaining to help them resolve this situation. So the application is to legalize the conversion into the eight co-op units.
They're co-ops because you said condo and co-ops.
The code says condos or co-ops, actually.
But this is co-ops.
But this is co-op.
Thank you.
Are there any change improvements contemplated?
No.
This is just... Is this... Oh, this is expanded to...
Yeah, they did the work. You know, obviously, the conversion happened, God knows how long ago. And now they're having to address it.
Legalizing it.
Yeah.
Do you have reports?
Well, it was legalized in terms of a co-op with the state, but not in our code?
Yeah, in our code.
Okay.
And everything's all up to code, fire safety-wise?
Well, ultimately, when we get the formal application, we'll referals to all those issues. We'll just basically see the aerial, the report here and the survey.
I want to ask this to go over a pre-submission conference.
Yep, and then adopt it. So actually, if you do this turn over, the page of the report, I could go through the issues that I came up with this.
Okay, so it's R-20.
So it is R-20 zone. So again, this conversion is permitted by special exception. And there are the general standards and there are some specific standards in the code. And I'll go through the ones that were, I think, issued. So the first, the comment or recommendation notes that there was a pre-existing CO for eight motel units, which was expand, which didn't have the benefit of the updated CO. There are also some decks that were constructed on this property. And it's not clear, based on the records, you know, whether or not there were permits or correct permits. So I'm noting in here that the decks could be an issue and have to be addressed. And they were sitting right up against the northerly property line. So there could be setback issues. But rather have to be addressed through zoning relief or reconstruction. But we at least identified the issue.
Where are you, Anthony?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on number one on the certivia.
The CO, 1972.
Yeah, goes back to 1972. So that one, we're talking about the decks that also have been built and/or expanded without the benefits of permits. So that's going to have to be addressed in this process as well. Number two, one of the specific standards, and that should say 330, not 33, the symbol there. 330, 155E. The units have to be 600 square feet minimum. The floor plans don't provide total square footages for the units. So based on my estimation, I don't probably have it printed there because they came on big sheets. But they don't provide the actual breakdown of the units.
No, this is not it?
No, that's just the survey showing the... I probably didn't attach the floor plan. So they did give a floor plan. It shows the eight units in there. But like I said, they don't say how big they are. So that's just got to be confirmed. If there's an issue with the size, it's got to be addressed then.
And is the closet...
Yeah, well, I'll get to that, too. Yeah.
Could you just backtrack just a second for me? What are we doing here today?
This is the report, the pre-submission conference report identifying the issues that I came up with in reviewing the...
So then they're going to have an actual submission?
At some point, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, just preliminary issue.
You may have said that, but I...
Not at all.
When did we hit the hearing?
Oh, this was...
August.
In August.
August 2023, okay.
The third one talks about what you were just mentioning. The floor plans show these units with bedrooms and they have an area that says "storage" with closet space in there. I believe that those are bedrooms. I don't believe there's any issues with having two-bedroom units, but they should be properly noted on the floor plans because the building department also has to make sure that they comply with whatever building code requirements you were alluding to as well. So that's got to be addressed.
And they both have windows?
I don't remember.
No, the closets don't have windows?
No, the bedroom.
The storage units, they say. The bedrooms have windows and the storage, I have to go back and look. But they labeled as storage and I raised the question of whether they're...
Okay.
Because, I mean, they're all roughly 93 to 100, you know, square feet, probably. Small bedrooms. There's a shed shown on the plan there that should be relocated to a conforming location. It's on the survey. It's just sitting up against the back property line. Let me just come down. It's not shown on the survey for number five here, but there's dumpster. It's clean, but it looks like it's sitting right in the right-of-way. Again, it's not... The board can see it right here. So we note that it's going to have to be located to a more suitable location. Again, it's very clean, but obviously, they need to have the dumpster.
We've got to put the requisite fencing.
And the proper fencing. And I'll... We'll note that in there, actually, with the proper fencing and screening. Number six, talk about septic system upgrade. I just believe that this project's going to necessitate it. I think it's going to be driven more by the requirements of the county and the building department, but I believe that...
So they'll get an IA system?
It'll be an IA system.
And they have space for this place? They're just on...
Yeah, right up there.
Normal septic, yeah.
Well, it's good. These septic systems are fairly condensed in design. Number seven, again, I got to fix that 330. The... One of the special exception criteria, this is classified as a type-one action under SEACRA. So at the time of a formal, they'll need a long EAF and we got to coordinate with the other agencies. And then eight, I just note that if they have to go to the zoning board at some point for something, we have our comments already prepared. There's not a lot of issues. You could see that the site's actually pretty well-kept. That's probably why it's been off the radar. This happens a lot. The properties are well-maintained. No one's drawing attention to it, but now it's noted.
They're trying to sell some units now.
Yeah, well, that's the other side of it. You start trying to do something, it becomes an issue.
Yeah, I mean, why all of a sudden is this happening, Mr. Apple?
Yeah, maybe someone is trying to sell a unit, maybe...
Yeah, they are, this person, for the first time.
For violations.
Kevin, you can just go to the...
Please identify yourself.
Kevin Springer, Dynamic Legal, 61 Channing Cross, Hampton Bays, New York. The property, one, you're going to love this story, but one of the owners turned in one of the other owners for doing some work, which prompted code enforcement to come down and write up a violation. That proceeded into multiple violations with a lot of infighting amongst the unit owners. Now, there is some work being done, but it is being through permits. As Anthony said, it is a very clean space. It's very well-kept. The units, I believe, are right around the 600. So I am going to have the engineer get the exact measurements and then put those in there. There is, with the storage, there are several where, basically, on some of the units, there is a wall. It doesn't go to the ceiling, so they blocked it off. Now, whether they're using them for a bedroom or not, I can't speak to that. I don't know. But it doesn't go all the way. And we have one of the board members here who, basically, we would recommend that you have to take them down because, obviously, there were never meant to be two bedrooms. And that's really that, the dumpster. Obviously, we need to move that. The deck that's on the northerly portion, actually, I believe we found some old paperwork that actually legalizes that, but I have to confirm that through the building department. And that was really it. Everything else, you know, we don't... Obviously, we have to fill out the long form, which is okay. And then, you know, obviously, we have to go through the building department and see what they require. Shed will be moved also. Yeah. It's not a very large shed, but it is, obviously, tucked in the corner and does need to be 10 feet off the property line.
Anthony, should we get a typical floor plan of one of the units just so we have it for the record?
Yeah.
I have one.
We have floor plans.
Yeah, because they're big.
We do.
Yeah.
Showing each unit. But they're just incomplete, basically.
I have one if you'd like to view it. I have one with me.
Oh, no, just as long as we have it for the record.
Yes, for sure. We have to, so confirm.
We have. Well, I will get that updated to the engineer who did it.
And to clarify, because I found sometimes these old records with decks going back to the 70s and everything, I'm not saying 100% that the decks are illegal because there were some permits issued. I just am not entirely sure. So let's just...
You have to see it.
Let's just confirm.
Yeah, well, which we will. And also, you know, back then, a deck at 12 inches high wasn't... There was no permit needed for it.
Yeah.
Because it was considered ground level or just above.
Yep.
Which they kind of still do, but it's a gray area in the building department. But back then, it was, I think, we have, we found something that will actually say it's okay. And if not, we'll have to address it.
Yes. Okay.
I think those are the issues.
Any other questions?
I'll move to adopt the report.
Motion by Dennis to adopt. Seconded by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, extensions, seven in favor. Thank you. And then number nine, Anthony, is Ashpern Gavero Terese. Like your little packet sense?
That's because I didn't send anything out.
Oh, terrible.
She noticed.
So I haven't got these somewhat prepared.
Do we have to go over these stuff?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. These, this is not a complicated project, thankfully. So it's up there on the screen as well. You should have an aerial in your little packet as well. Actually, can I hold on one sec? So basically, this is a subdivision and a lot line change, R-20 zoning, Fanning Avenue and Wakeman. You can see up there the Fanning Avenue property. And then it's also this property here, which is on Wakeman. They're adjacent to each other under the same ownership. The plan, basically, is to do a little lot line change. This property is going to get a little sliver of this piece. And this lot then gets subdivided down the middle to create two lots. The structure would be demoed. The structures in the back would be demoed. And ultimately, you end up with one more residence than what's there now. So that's...
But are they merging that?
No, no, no. This is a separate lot. They're just giving a sliver of land from this piece to this piece to make this one bigger and probably to address an encroachment. But there was no zoning issues or anything like that.
Well, it looks like the pool was 50 feet from the old lot line.
Yeah. But there was no permits or setback issues with that. So, well, at the time that the pool was put in, you know, zoning and could have changed subsequent to that.
So we're creating irregularly shaped lots with this? Is there any possibility of one that line all the way down?
Yeah, let me take a look again. Yeah, I mean, this lot in question is the one that becomes somewhat irregularly shaped. But...
It's just sort of notched into it.
Yeah, it just sort of notched into it. It didn't, you know, it is a little irregularly shaped. I didn't have any major issues with it only because this was the portion of the property. It couldn't really go all the way down. Well, because then this piece then would have, basically, a flat strip off of Fanning.
Yeah. That would be sillier than what exists now.
What's going to happen to the existing cottage on Lot 2?
The one that's in the middle there?
Well, they're saying proposed dwelling. But then there's a one-story cottage.
Yeah, that's going to be demoed.
That's good. Okay, so it should...
Should be noted then?
Yep.
Okay.
This area of Hampton Bays is seeing a lot of activity related to renovations and lot clearing. And is there any mechanism for us to ask, even though there's not a restriction, to ask for that to be considered in the site plan to maintain some of the community character of the larger trees and things like that?
You'll see in my little report here, I left out the buffer. I usually gray that out for the discussion purposes to see where we want to go.
Okay. Thanks.
So this is final conditional approval?
Yep, final conditional approval. And you have the resolution here. I'll go through with you. The first page, project description. We adopted the pre-application report for this in May of 26, 2022. Type-two action under SEACRA and no further environmental review is required. You deem this final application complete and then waive the hearing with a 30-day written comment period. At the bottom of the very first page, talks about the findings. Number one, the Health Department approved this subdivision August 4 with individual septic systems and public water.
They do?
It's August of '23. Isn't that IA system?
It's gotta be IA.
Yeah, they are.
Okay, it doesn't say that.
Yeah, no, I just, I didn't distinguish it because what they do is the way they do an approval for what they call septic systems and public water. We require the IA and that's what they have to put here. The Health Department requires it.
So individual IA.
We could put IA in there 100%.
Yeah.
That is the requirement now.
Yeah, but it doesn't read that way.
Yeah, it doesn't. And I just, the Health Department has their own covenants. Two, again, the pre-application report that was adopted and this map is in agreement with that. Again, type-two action under SEACRA. It was an archeological, so that was done. Didn't find anything. Number five, final public hearing was waived with a 30-day written comment period. No comments were received. And the park fee, the park would be satisfied with a fee in this case. You have two existing residences, so it would be assessed for the one new residence at $2,500. We got comments from the Department of Fire Prevention. They just note street addresses and they have adequate water mains and hydrants.
The one-story cottage with the...
What's that?
The one-story cottage with the...
In the back, you mean?
Yeah.
We raised the question in the pre-application report and it's being demolished because I did not see any COs for that.
So we are the two good things.
What's that? Oh, the one on Wakeman, the one where we're doing the lot line change?
Yeah.
So that has a house on it already. And then the lot in the middle, let's break it down into two.
Oh, I see it, yeah.
So they have one on that property. Can't give them credit for the other one. We had the comments from the town engineer. Number one, they talk about, there's some minor map changes, actually. Although, it talks about on Wakeman, there's a hedgerow that's in the right-of-way, so that's going to have to be addressed and I'll have to put it in the resolution. And then the subdivision map, just the standard requirements, the CNR relating to the drainage and the speedies prior to the issuance of a building permit and the monuments, which is standard. Conservation Board provided recommendations. And to your point, they recommend, they talk about the woods in the back part of the property. I talked about creating a buffer. It's hard to see. It's a little bit easier up here. You know, back here, you have the two existing structures that are going to come out. I don't know if you can see here. I have been to the property. But if you look, there's a lot of dead vegetation sitting back here. So when I get to that buffer point, we can talk about that issue.
Do you know why that happened?
Probably the beetle, but I couldn't say for certain.
Pine beetle?
We get a lot of that these days, it seems. It just fall over eventually. So anyway, the Conservation Board always likes to try to protect trees as much as possible. And talk about hand removal of any debris. Obviously, like I said, there's structures and things going on, but all that's got to be removed as part of this approval. Suffolk County Department of Economic Development and Planning said this is a matter for local determination. Hampton Bay Fire District said there's sufficient fire protection within 200 feet. We didn't get any comments from the Trails Advisory this time, but I do note that at the pre-application, they said there were no trail implications. So let's put it in there. Same thing with the Landmarks and Historic Districts. They didn't give us anything this time, but I put the comments in from their original review. Nothing's really going to change. And they just happened to note that the existing cottage would be subject to the ordinary referral for demolition to the Landmarks Board. That's part of the building permit process they refer to there. Once it's 75 years older, it automatically goes to the Landmarks Board. They'll make their recommendations and they could go from there. So I actually just imposed that as a condition in the resolution. So at the bottom of that page, there's a resolution to approve the subdivision with conditions. Talks about the map changes. Here's where we talk about the buffers. I don't know how the, you know, this, what we try to do with clearing is hard to do a lot of times when you're not in the aquifer. Shinnecock, we have imposed clearing restrictions before in non-aquifer areas. It's been done before. Typically, Shinnecock Hills, maybe other areas that, you know, make sense. Here, you know, having been out there, some of that vegetation, you know, is dead. I don't know how much we get out of the buffer in this case, you know, from just a realistic standpoint. So I put it for an open discussion to see what the board, how they feel about it.
But you're talking about dead trees. Why didn't the Conservation Board note that? They just talk about debris that has to be hand-cleared. Any discarded, littered debris within the easterly needs to be hand-removed. But they don't talk about any light or anything.
Yeah, that same thing with, which will be an extension, actually, today for 32 Hill Station. They talk about establishing buffers and easements. You know, even with dead vegetation, if you see it sitting there, but there's still other vegetation around, the Conservation Board does like to, you know, still preserve it. That's just the nature. You know, you'll find Marty's office will often say, if it's been infested with the beetle, just leave the dead vegetation there. Once the vegetation's dead, they've moved on somewhere else and it's better to let the vegetation rot and, you know, nutrients into the ground.
Interesting. East Hampton's doing a whole other thing.
Yeah, I mean, there's fire issues.
East Hampton is tearing, cutting down the road 27.
100%, which we raised on the previous application before, by the way. So here, I didn't have a really strong recommendation either way for a buffer. So I left it for a discussion purposes to see.
Yeah, I mean, generally, down to Fanning and Argon East especially, there's, it's more about maintaining, like, silt and site runoff that really just goes right, like a flume, down right into the bay there, which, as noted by the Conservation Board, is a high-priority water quality improvement zone in Shinnecock Bay there. So I think, you know, this project aside, it's worth the consideration of maintaining a buffer even just along the roadside, like wildlife corridor, community character, and maintaining, you know, stormwater within the site versus onto the road and down. And this is not too far, right? Like, if you go down...
Are there trees?
I mean, we could... Doing a buffer along the road is okay because there's a setback there. So you can't do anything. We would allow for the driveway, obviously, to go in there. We could certainly do, I think, if you do 25 feet off the road there, that'll get you far enough into the property to capture existing...
What's the Conservation Board, like, orienting us to the map? So easement extending 35 feet west from the easterly lot line of Lot 3. So they're saying, like, in between the lots?
Yeah, they're talking in this area over here is where they were talking about establishing a buffer. They didn't talk about the road here. So it's, you know, the wooded portions of this property is where they were talking about.
And what's the ownership of the southerly lot there beyond that?
Over here?
No. Like, if you put your arrow up, it's to the south.
To the back of the property.
Back here.
Is that all one lot there?
This is one lot back here.
With an easement or just not cleared?
What's that?
With an easement or...
Yeah, this property is pretty intact here.
But is there an easement recorded on that property?
I don't believe there is.
I don't believe so. I could check right here, actually.
Teresa, do you have any insight as to the pine beetle? What Conservation is recommending or doing or updated?
What was the recommendation, Anthony?
No, I'm just...
No, just in general, you know, there's a lot of pine beetle infestation, but there's no reference of that here on the Conservation Boards. I just wondered.
Yeah. Sorry. So generally speaking, once a pine beetle has a, once a pine beetle swarm has attacked a pine tree, it's dead, right? It's not going to, there's no saving it. It's not the pine beetle itself that kills the tree. It introduces a fungus called blue-stain fungus, which is why sometimes you'll see on the side of the road a slice or a log and it's got, like, this brown, bluish-blackish color inside. And it's basically clogs up the vascular system so water is not getting up and down the tree. And at certain points, there's so many beetles infesting the trees and introducing the fungus that they send out barimonies and they go and attack another tree. And that's kind of how it works. Unfortunately, once a tree's been attacked by southern pine beetle, there's no saving it because it's got, it's got the fungus in the system now. Generally speaking, you know, if it's not a danger to structures or people, the Conservation Board and the Environment Division recommend that they leave the tree because the trees can still provide habitat for cavity nesting birds like owls and bats, which obviously are critically endangered right now. And then if it is a problem, they say, "Clive us a call, we'll come out." And we'll, even if you're in APOD, we'll give you permission to cut the tree into sections, limit, score it down the middle so that it exposes any beetles that are still in the tree to kill them. But then they recommend that they just leave them because you don't want to transport a tree that might have beetles to another site and infest another site. So that's why they recommend that the trees just be left where they are So, that's why they recommend that the, the trees just be left where they are, and then obviously leave the understory, because the understory still has hydrological functions and ecological functions. But again, as long as the tree is not a danger to anyone or any structures, they recommend that they leave them, because they do still provide habitat value.
Interesting.
Any other questions?
No, I mean, I think we're gonna see more and more pine beetle infestation.
Yeah.
And some guidance and guidelines would be great to put into our report, because they don't mention it here.
Right. And, like, again, unfortunately, it is more likely to see increasing southern pine beetle infestations because of the warming climate. Previous years, when we've had really hard freezes, the season following is generally not as active, because they're less adapted to cooler climates, but as you know, climate is changing, it's getting warmer, we didn't have hardly any snow last year. So, those are, those are concerns, obviously, that we have to be aware of, and unfortunately, this is a large problem, it's an ongoing problem. It's been studied to death down in the south, where they had pine found, uh, plantations for over 100 years, and they still haven't found a remedy to protect the trees from the southern pine beetle.
East Hampton's cutting down, you know, on the Napeague Road going out toward Montauk, they're cutting, they're all dead.
And they're taking them away because of the fire concern.
Right, so, there are, there are reasons why, in some instances where it might be appropriate to remove trees and cut them away, it's particularly along highways and major thoroughfares, where you have, like, Napeague Stretch, that's the only road, right? You can't get to Montauk, you can't leave Montauk, so if there is a fire, or, like, the road blockage, or during a major storm, that's problematic, that's a safety concern, and that's probably why they're doing it. Initially, when East Hampton, when southern pine beetle first became an emerging issue, the town and Suffolk Ca, uh, the Central Pine Barrens and East Hampton and some other towns, we formed a Southern Pine Beetle Task Force to try and address these, and in East Hampton, they were going and expending town monies on various properties, inclusive of town properties, but unfortunately, it didn't, it didn't prevent the spread, right?
They were trying, trying to.
They were trying to prevent the spread, because their, their, when East, when Southampton realized there was a problem, it was already widespread.
Yeah.
When East Hampton realized there's a problem, it was not that widespread, and now, it's unfortunately, very widespread. And, and one beetle can have multiple generations in a season, right?
You drive down 114, and it's.
It's, it's devastating, yeah. Part, you know, there is some, some thought about forest thinning, because then you don't have pheromone.
Contagion?
Yeah, like, pheromone concentrations are reduced, because more wind gets in there, but again, you know, that, that's not necessarily, still, still doesn't necessarily work. And then you're already cutting down trees that were healthy, you know, so it's, it's an ongoing problem. Still, a lot of research, there are books like this of studies, you know, multiple books every year, you know, I'm sure Marty would be happy to loan you a copy if you wanna read some of it.
I think what would be helpful is that if Conservation could identify a stand of trees that are infected, and say, the foliage on that particular property is infested with pine beetle, so then we are not guessing whether or not we should have the applicant just cut them down, or call in the Conservation Board. I mean, usually make a site visit, right?
Yes, site visits are usually done, but usually what happens is, a tree can be fine, and then in three months, it could be dead.
Wow.
Right, so, it can happen very quickly. And then when you have years where you have drought and other environmental stressors, it can be more rapid. So, on, you know, they may go out and say, "It's fine, it looks okay," and then by the time it actually gets through you, it's not so fine. You know, and, and it can happen very rapidly.
Expanding on Chair LaFaro's point, assuming that this is a pine beetle issue, we don't know for sure, right?
It's actually fairly easy to tell if it's a pine beetle issue. If you see an ongoing attack, what will happen is, you'll see sap tubes that look like popcorn dotting the entirety of the tree trunk, right? Versus turpentine beetle, where you'll see long streaks of sap, right? This looks like popcorn.
Right.
Right, and then, it, what'll happen is that the tree starts to turn red from the top down, because the water's not getting up to the top branches, so it starts to turn red, and then it turns black, right? Versus what you often see in a healthy pine tree is every three years, like, a bunch of the needles drop, so you'll see, like, a tree, it looks orange, and like, "Oh, my God!" But you still have green needles, and it's all over, you know, got orange needles, that's a normal cyclical thing, that they drop their needles every, like, you know, three years or so, that's normal. But when you see a tree, one week looks green and healthy, the next week, the top looks a little red, you know, that, that, you gotta start looking for the other signs, is there popcorn on the side of the tree?
But if we subdivide this property, and there are going to be two new homes there, obviously, the, I don't have my bearings with me, is that the west or?
The west side is the wooded side.
Okay, so the west side, obviously, there'd be clearing there to accommodate the new home, and then there would be the removal of some trees that were, you know.
Possibly infected.
Either infected or maybe infected, so what are the protocols that we have in place in that case?
In that case, they recommend, if you're doing tree removal and you have to remove off-site, did you recommend you chip to about a one-inch size?
So, you just.
So, you, so you kill the beetles?
So, you grind them up, yep.
So, really, what we're considering here is irrelevant of whether it's a pine beetle infestation or not, because of, you know, ecological succession, and the forest would grow back in its own way, anyway.
Right.
Even if you did leave it or didn't leave it. So, what Conservation is recommending is actually shifting the buildable lot area, so that the setback is gonna be 20 feet on the east side, and actually put an easement in place on the right side of that map, the westerly side, is that correct?
Yeah.
So that, whether there's dead trees or not, you know, still other things will grow.
Right, and then that would provide a.
And that there's a wildlife corridor, and, you know, some habitat that's.
Right, correct.
Now or in the future.
Right, because even if you have a pine tree that dies, right, and you have a couple of pine trees that die, over time, you will have succession, right? I live in the Pine Barrens, and when we built our house, we had successive years of gypsy moths and, and canker worm caterpillars that just decimated our trees, right? I lost all, almost all my oak trees on my property. However, in the 15, 17 years that had, it has intervened behind my house, which was devastated, now we have 30-foot pines, you know, because they grew up that quicks. Remarkably.
They got the, the sunshine in the air.
Right, remarkably, pitch pines are one of the fastest-growing trees we have here on Long Island. I mean, that's why, you know, you see, you know, 30 years later, the area of sunrise that was devastated by fire looks like a, an old forest, right?
So, there is value here, I feel, for Conservation easement in this area, if there's a legal mechanism to do it.
I'm gonna make my recommendation then.
Or a request to the client, right?
You know.
Teresa, there are.
That's kinda the thing we're getting down to.
Thank you.
You're welcome, have a good day.
You know, I think it could be a covenanted buffer, just because we're not, there's nothing adjacent to it that we're creating something larger, I don't know that a easement is necessary, but I could do it as a covenant buffer. You know, you might have to go back to your client, you know, we could do, if the board wants, if you have anything specific, you know, something along the road, and then something along this property line. Back here, the, first of all, this adjacent property is pretty wooded back here, there's no improvements that this would be adjacent to, and they've gotta go back here, and they've gotta clear and take down the existing structures. We normally don't make someone re-vegetate if it's not in aquifer, so, you know, I could conceivably see doing something along this property line and something along the road.
Would that, would that impact the side yard requirements?
Not if we compromise and don't do 35 feet, we could do 25 feet.
It's our 20, too, so it's.
It's our 20, and they, they could always do the minimum side and the total, they could always choose to reverse that themselves, so that shouldn't affect the building.
Does it affect the pyramid?
That's re, that'll be up to them, too. Does it affect pyramid? No, because, well, presumably, no, because as long as you're meeting your minimum and total setbacks on the side yard, but that also doesn't necessarily mean they wouldn't have, depends on how a house is designed, of course.
Okay, okay.
But that, in and of itself, doesn't cause a pyramid problem.
I'm questioning the benefits of the road front.
I understand.
If you look at the aerial, this area's heavily developed, it's, it's just lawns and.
A hundred percent.
Down to.
But did they have, I was just looking at that, too, but, but there is green.
Yeah, look at the street view.
A green corridor from the streetscape.
They have street trees, yeah, but it's, it's pretty much lawn running underneath the trees down to the, down to the runway.
Well, if I may interject a couple of things here, real quick, the, on the, coming from the street up, there is a plan to put evergreens, because that, I, I'm not sure if you're aware, but Fanning Avenue now has become one of the major side streets to get to Montauk Highway, so there's a ton of traffic, especially in the morning, and they want their, they wanna buffer the, you know, the property from the road anyway.
They do.
So, probably some sort of evergreen or hedgerow, as we've done on the Wakeman House, which, well, obviously, we have to move that hedgerow a little bit, that will, that, that's going to be done anyway.
They'll do a, our, our lighting or something like that.
Yeah, something, something deer-friendly.
There's not much.
And there is. What's that?
I said, "There's not much."
No, not anymore.
A deer friendly.
And if you look at the house, the way it is now, to the right of it is the actual east side of the house. So, if you're looking at the house right where his thing, the arrow is, to the right of that is the eastern portion going towards the bay. There isn't, we're not going to be, there is, there is a lot of dead beetle going on there, but there is, and it's just laying there, just like Teresa had said, you just let it sit, but there are, there is some, also some oaks and stuff in there. There's no intention of taking that down, because that's the only screening between the other gentleman's house there.
Yeah.
So, I don't really feel that a, you know, 35-foot easement is, I don't, I just, in this, you know, if it was a bigger, you know, four-lot subdivision, I would say, yeah, you'd take a chunk of it.
I think maybe a, a buffer.
A buffer of 35.
A buffer, a 25-foot buffer might seem appropriate, this way you can guarantee.
Well, that's a pretty big buffer, though, when you, you know, 35-foot.
But 25?
Also, the only other thing I wanted, on the survey from the Health Department, it
is noted on both lots that the septic system is and will be, have to be, because we are in a high priority. They are IA systems.
Yeah, for sure.
And will be IA systems, yeah.
Building, but the house.
Because they won't get a building permit without it.
It's not practical.
So, is there a consensus of the board?
I mean, I think it's just the pleasure of the applicant, right? Because there's no restrictions, so what we're saying is, I personally have been, you know, traversing that area for a while, I think there are a lot of street trees, there's no clearing restrictions.
Right.
That we're trying to work on with the town board, you know, in terms of code and the area for water quality, community character, and habitat, and that if your client would consider adding a buffer, that that would be a nice addition to this site plan, you know, for those reasons. And that's really all that we can do, right?
Yeah, I mean, absent, you know, requiring it, you know, like I said, this is sort of.
Is it overwhelming?
Yeah, I would support a buffer, 25-feet buffer, sure. I mean, I think it makes sense, because they're right next to a house that's.
You can require it.
We can require it, as part of the, the approval.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Of which lot?
You know, that house is.
I guess it would be, Dennis, on that easternmost.
Lot, lot, lot 3?
Considered Lot 3 on the map.
But they haven't laid it out, I mean, they haven't laid out where they're gonna put the houses.
So, what Conservation is recommending?
Yeah, that doesn't make a difference, we don't.
Is 35-foot buffer along the.
Eastern side.
Eastern side, and actually, that would shift Lot 3's buildable envelope.
Quite a bit.
Right, and so, if that's not, then I think we maximize the buffer with the existing building envelope, who's maybe the place to meet.
Well, I can go back to him, I mean, I'm, I'm sure he'll be willing to do some kind of buffer, because, like I said, there's no intention of actually clearing that now or ever, because that, again, that's the only natural buffer we have to begin with. You know, and if the trees, you know, they're not, like I said, they're not all pine trees, so not all the trees are gonna fall down, you know, so, but I will be more than happy to take it back to him and see what he says.
I think 35 is excessive.
Okay, Dennis believes 35 is excessive, so.
It's a different 25.
Usually, I mean, look, the board knows, when I'm very clear about my buffers, I usually put in the language, here's what I believe is the appropriate recommendation. I left this one out, because I, sort of like Dennis, wasn't sure how, you know, urgent it was, so you're gonna go back to your client, anyway, but.
So, we have 36.6.
36. 36 points from the, from the side yard.
Yeah.
From the side yard, so if it was 25, then it'd be like a 10-foot away from the house, is that enough room to maneuver?
Not sure.
But this is just proposed, I mean, this is a proposed, uh.
Building lot.
Building lot.
Yeah, that's, we're not approving specific.
Well, these, but they are approved through the Board of Health already.
Well, maybe, yeah, okay, that's a second thing. Let me continue, and then we'll come back. So, the first one was the buffer, the next one was the postal delivery addresses, remove the proposed structures and building envelopes ultimately from the plan, you can't file maps like that, anyway, so.
Right.
Any requirements by the town engineer, ease about the notation, it just indicates the legal documents that are associated with the subdivision, the next page, a couple more note, map notations, one regarding compliance with the zoning ordinance, and then the one for signature by the planning board. Second, the removal of the one-story cottage in the frame shed is shown on the map prior to the signature of the final maps, we usually do that, I have it grayed out, but that, 'cause that was a discussion item. The park fee, which is $2,500, declaration of covenants and restrictions, again, the first one was the buffer discussion, so we'll, we'll see what, I'm sorry, go?
In relationship to that, Conservation mentions the Shinnecock Bay watershed, are there any requirements around that Shinnecock Bay watershed? Is there a plan there, or are there standards or?
No, it's, 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 you know, it's, you know, the town identifies all the, you know, estuaries, right? And so, beyond the normal that we would have for wetland setbacks and, and stuff like that along the water, there's nothing else specifically beyond that.
Didn't the county do all that establishment of the watersheds as part of the overall project?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's leading them to their next debate, which will be the septic, I mean, the sewage district, that they're trying desperately to get, so.
But that, but that was the logical Conservation recommendation, because, because of that proximity, that's why they said, "A highly valued forested land."
Yeah, I understand. So, on the covenants there, he's gonna discuss with the client about the buffers, then the next one is the demolition of the existing residence currently located at 91 Fanning Avenue is subject to review by the Landmarks and Historic District Board prior to the issuance of a demolition permit by the Division of Building and Zoning. That was just because that's what came out of Landmarks, so let's just note that, before you demo, you have to go to Landmarks, absent having a historic designated structure, you know, there's not much that could be done. No further subdivision of the lots, no lot line changes without further approval. The next two talk about utilities and utility poles, and no new overhead utilities, everything should be on the ground. The three-inch requirement for impervious surfaces, the next one is the coverage under the speedies permit for each individual lot prior to the issuance of a building permit, and then the last one is the retention of stormwater runoff for, during, and after construction. And to your point, Kate, you know, we do try to put them in the covenants and restrictions, even though the requirements of the code that all runoff is supposed to be retained on site.
Yeah.
And the, and typically, that gets reviewed by the engineer as part of the building permit application, so, let's see, but vegetation is a big help to, to maintain vegetation.
Right, another backstop.
So, seven, seven changes, then, right?
Yes, that would, that would, number seven would change if, but number five, again, these are the submission of the legal documents, the easement or buffer, well, if it.
If it's a buffer, it's not.
Yeah, if it's a buffer, then we wouldn't have to go to the town board, submission of the paper prints and my LARS, and then filing of those maps once they're signed within 62 days. Do you wanna talk to your client, and then?
Yeah, I'm, I will speak to him tomorrow.
Speak to him tomorrow, let me know, 'cause then I could just quickly put it on, just to.
For December, for the next session.
Yeah, the next meeting, and I could just, quickly just fix that one issue, then, let me know, that's all. All right, so.
We're meeting next week.
Yeah.
What's that?
We're meeting next week.
Yes, I'm, I'm aware. I like that.
So, no action.
Good.
Yeah, we're okay, we'll come back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have Hampton, six, 12.
Oh, yeah, I guess I have number three. Oh, so that's the market, so, in Hampton Bay, so I actually saw Tom, our engineer, yesterday, he's preparing his memo on that, and will have it connected for us, so, he's just very behind. So, this one's just gonna be an extension.
Extension.
I'll put that suite until November 16.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Craig, second by Gloria.
Yes.
All in favor.
I.
Both extensions, extension to November 16, seven in favor. Claire, you're up, capital one.
Capital one.
Is anybody here for any of that? Um, I'm gonna skip to applicants, I feel that's bad for them.
Um, I wanna skip to applicants, I feel that's bad for them for sitting here. Um, my next, so we'll just skip over capital one, how about, um, anybody here for, uh, Delandro? No, I like that. How about Sunrise Espeón?
Right.
Yeah, why don't you come up? Um, so this is, um, contested. So this is, uh, to do Secra and to deem it complete, this is Sunrise Espeón. Actually is a couple doors down from Dean Leandro, so very similar applications, um. This would be just to review the part two.
Is it unlisted?
It's unlisted, yeah, and this is, this was a little bit more unusual. This is the one where the property was, um, cleared, um, because of, it was the treatment area for when they treated the water for the, the super fund sites. So there was some clearing in the back, but it's actually re-vegetated really nicely, I did a referral to the Pine Barrens. And they came back and said that it's, it's a valuable, uh, vegetated area, it's coming back very nicely and.
Pine trees growing fast.
It's actually a beautiful grassland right now, so, um, and that's valuable too.
Can we get those referrals, that's important for us to read.
I actually, uh, the hot, I, you had a copy of it, but it's not in this case. Um, it's the other one, Delandro, I referred to you. It's so funny, this. I was gonna have a copy of it, cause I thought it was productive. But in this case, they are, they are acceptable to the plan as designed, so this is the plan that's proposed. So, there actually is two plans, two. Um, this is also, they're doing it in two phases, they're doing the three thousand square feet now, but they're gonna do, uh, ten thousand together.
Uh, total.
Three thousand now.
Three thousand and then going to whatever the.
Yeah, ten thousand.
Whatever this would be the storage area.
Yeah, so this, so this is gonna be Secra on the ten thousand square feet too, so, um, eventually when they get ready for their second phase, that will be what is proposed. Very similar again to the Delandro, just a couple doors down.
Can we get an area report?
Sure.
So ten thousand square feet is proposed now?
Nope, three thousand, it'll be phase one and two.
Okay, so it's a phased application.
Yeah, it's gonna be phased.
So we're gonna do Secra on the whole thing?
Yes, and the reason is.
So we don't segment it.
Exactly, exactly, so that's why I did the referral to Pine Barrens, so we would know what their, their master plan was okay on the concept. And this is the parcel, um, in question, um, this is the clearing that we were talking about, but it's been, it's been coming back as, as grasslands. So, the proposal is to do a building very similar to this building, but on the south side, as you can see on the site plan.
So clearing, there's no clearing restrictions here?
There is, so there's also a, a one caveat with that, so they'll be doing fifty percent clearing, which meets the aqua protection overlay district restrictions. Uh, Pine Barrens is less restrictive, they allow up to sixty-five percent clearing, but in this case, they're just gonna stay at the fifty percent with the project. Um, but also, right now, there is a clearing restriction of twenty-five percent, because this was a subdivision that was created in nineteen eighty-eight when we didn't have aquifer protection overlay district standards yet, so the planning board at the time gave twenty-five percent as a clearing restriction.
So we have to amend the covenant.
You'd amend the covenant to go up to fifty percent and that they've already still submitted to that too.
Is it hearing, is that a separate action, do we need a hearing for that?
I think we'd recommend a hearing anyways, and then do it, um, uh, and then do it at the same time, you do the decision for the site plan.
Okay.
Yeah, so this was all in the pre-submission reports, it was outlined in that, and, uh, they've come up with a good project. I didn't identify anything significant in the part two, but if you wanna go over it.
Where, where, what, what are the blue lines on?
Those are, uh, buffer easements, there's fifty-five buffer on the front and fifty-five buffer on the rear. Which is great, and so the parcel to the west, because of what the town's not gonna do, C on two hundred.
Is this where Boyd's development was?
It's on the other side of the street.
South on the east side.
Yeah.
Do you guys have to address the grading at all of it there, I thought it, doesn't it dip down?
Which is, right, so they.
Can you just identify yourself for the record?
Uh, Charlie Ferrari with Sunrise Espeón, this is my partner Sean with Sunrise Espeón.
Nice to meet you.
On the north side, you're actually at the top of a hill on the south side, and the property dips down tremendously towards that grassy area as you go north. You know, if you're traveling by car, you go up, you could feel it in your stomach, so there's a big drainage area there, which is why they want us to stay close to the Excelsior building.
Yeah.
Right on the other side of that red line.
Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah, it makes sense, um, the development will go on this flat area here, yeah. And then this would be just, you know, remain naturally vegetated, but will succeed back into, um, Pine Barrens hopefully, so. So I didn't identify any significant impact on land is, um, impact on clearing and construction, appropriate drainage to be incorporated in the site plan design. Um, no impacts on geological features, surface waters, um, impact on groundwater, an IA system will be required. And obviously, there's APOD restrictions that are being complied with, uh, no impacts on flooding, which is number, uh, page three.
Are there any plume monitors involved here?
Not on this property itself, as far as I could see, um, I do, um, we will put language in there about that there was a plume, uh, in the area. And then this will be on a slab, right?
Yes.
So I think we should incorporate that somewhere in this.
Okay.
There's a brand new water main.
I might have, but just one second, I have to see my language, I wrote this a couple weeks ago, so.
The buffer is across the entire thing.
All the, all the properties, all the buildings are off of, um, well water, now they're on city water. They put a brand new water main down, I wanna say like four years ago.
Okay, so we can do that underground water, if that's what you wanna do.
I think so.
Okay.
I have a question for you, that, so, we're looking at the smaller, the first building, I guess, is what we're talking about today. And then the area marked proposed outdoor storage, that's going to eventually become the larger building, is that what?
So our plan, we own Sunrise Sanitation.
Right.
Right now, we're, we're renting a five thousand square foot building in Quag. We have a budget to build a three thousand square foot for now to run our business.
Right.
Um, at some point in the future, whether we do or not, maybe we'd like to build as big as, a building as Excelsior for rentals if, at some point, maybe not.
So that could one day become a building or it could just stay, storage, depending on how you guys do whatever. And, and what do you store?
Uh, well, we have about twenty, twenty-two trucks, um, some empty containers, which most likely will be renting from landlords across the street or, or rental yard in Quag to keep the containers.
Right, right, so your, the, the storage is a combination of your trucks and your.
Yeah, yeah, parking, you know, we have.
Your dumpsters.
Seventeen employees.
Ran out.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not sure any materials of any kind.
No, no.
And is the plan to, you're gonna do the full parking lot in the first phase, or is that gonna be phased as well?
I think we would, you know, they wanted to see it, I don't, I think we would do it now, just to get it all done. Just depending on the cost, but if we get approved for it, uh, you know, we, we would go for a loan, obviously, from the bank and try and put it in if we, if we can, yeah, because I think we have to put all the drainage in, I mean, we might as well.
And your trucks would be parked there, is that?
Empty trucks, yeah.
The idea?
Mm-hmm.
Would you guys have roll-offs on site as well?
Roll-off trucks?
Yeah, like the, the.
Our whole, it's our headquarters, our office, our garage, or, you know, our, our whole headquarters is there, so. All the, all the guys' personal vehicles when they come in, parked there.
Okay, but then my, I guess my question would be, will you be cleaning out any, like?
No, no sorting, just parking and garage and office, no, no type of sorting.
We don't do that now, we're not allowed to do that. Yeah.
We've done this before at a couple sites, um, for Morseick, um, kind of three-nine, and then for S and P, I think, on Hampton Bay. So they would just have con, conditions that would be very clear, that this would be no sorting, this would be just for clean, you know, roll-off truck containers and things like that, yeah, okay. Do you want that anywhere here in the Doc, secret documents two about the use?
Where do you think the right?
You do that under, uh, community character, which would be eighteen.
Or noise, odor and light, I mean.
Mm-hmm.
Are you gonna be stockpiling any waste or debris on that site?
Say that again?
Are you gonna be stockpiling any waste or debris on that site?
No.
When you pull a dumpster.
The trucks get emptied the same day, multiple, multiple times throughout the day.
Okay, so it's not like you pull in, stays there for a few days?
No, everything goes to Gap Bank every day.
Okay, gotcha.
I would say under impact on noise, odor and light.
That's what I thought was logical.
Okay, we'll put in both places.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else, do you want me to go over the rest of them?
Let's see, defined, uh, critical environmental areas, okay, let's look at that one.
That is number twelve, yes, and that's the project should comply with APOD and, um, essential pine barren, compatible growth area regulations of fifty percent.
A fifty percent of clearing. Right, you need the word clearance there.
Yep.
Otherwise, it's fifty percent of nothing.
Exactly. And then transportation, um, so I got this from the one we just did, which is Delandro, you deemed it completes, and then you had some concerns about the Espeón for Head Road intersection.
You did, we sent the referral over to county, didn't we?
We sent to the county, the county does not have jurisdiction over Old Country Road, I did find that after the fact.
Yeah, there's the, the intersect, one was county, one was town.
No, the county, uh, jurisdiction ends to the west of here, on Old Country Road, so I found that out after, but it did go to the town of Southampton and the town engineer and highway department. So, yes, and you know what I did, as an aside, is I asked code enforcement to issue a violation on his hedges because he doesn't meet quarter clearance, so that might hopefully have a beneficial impact once he fixes his hedges. So, so I did that, hopefully that helps.
You guys may already know, making a left at that intersection.
Yeah, it's a disaster.
Yeah, it's very dangerous.
Yeah.
So I still have that same language though, cause it's relevant for this project too, I think. So, um, that was that, uh, impact on energy, no, um, impact on noise, odor and light, I'll have the comments about, uh, being clean containers, um, impact on human health, I'm gonna mention again the contamination, and then. Yeah, so that would be C, sixteen C. Mm-hmm. And then maybe other impacts. Right. Notating the public water hookup. Do they have to have any kind of vapor barrier to, you know, have their office in operation on there or not? No, because they're not up, they're not using, they don't have applicable space in the basement, that would be where you'd have a basement.
Cause it's just a slab.
Yes, it's a slab, and this is what I've seen commercial projects in similar areas do, so it's how it meets the criteria. Um, and then consistency with community plans and consistency with commu, uh, community character, and that's where I'm just gonna talk about the use a little bit, making sure we have some conditions related to it. So I'm recommending a negative declaration, uh, well, we'd soon lead agency, negative declaration, and then deem it, application completes. So I do have one application, one resolution for the neg dac, and then maybe do a second one for the deeming complete.
Okay.
I'll move the neg dac.
So motion to, uh, for ne, negative declaration by Dennis, second by Craig, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed extension, seven in favor. And the second is for completeness.
For next year, twenty twenty-four.
Piling up?
Yeah.
I don't think we scheduled anything yet, seven.
Oh, nothing?
Okay, so we might have to go to the twenty-seventh if we get to nine, all right? But we'll start with this one, number thirteen of January, for completeness.
The hearing?
Public hearing?
Yep.
Okay, so motion to deem it complete with a public hearing, uh, motion by Kate. Second by Craig, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed extension, seven in favor, um, so it'll be what, Kristen, January?
January thirteen.
Thirteen.
We're coming in on Saturday.
January eleventh.
Thank you.
Eleven, you're looking at a twenty-three calendar, okay.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, eleven.
We're not coming in on the eighteen.
Okay, so, um, we do Elliston, which is number five.
Number seven, Lester Elliston, someone here for that?
Yes.
Did you want to, for Delandro?
Oh, we can.
No one's here, oh, you just came.
He can wait?
He can wait.
He's gotta get back to a child.
Oh, okay.
Uh, this is actually pretty easy, we went over this, um, and really the only issue, uh, for this was, uh, keep one, sorry.
Well, send them on.
The only, yeah, we went over this maybe October twenty-sixth meeting, um, but she couldn't attend, um, and the, really the outstanding issue was, um.
Give us a little, to catch up here, do we have an aerial?
The meeting was the twelfth, I believe.
Three, three lots.
Was it the twelfth? Yes.
This is the one next to the cemetery.
This is the one next to the cemetery, and I apologize, my copies now have blocked out all the issues.
Well, we found the fire hydrant.
I did find the fire hydrant.
We found the fire hydrant, I did.
Pickens, then read it.
Conservation Board comments.
Yes, it really has to boil down now, the conservation board comments, their comments were that the number two and number three, I'll get you a map, um.
Again, it's cutting down vegetation.
Right, exactly, and so, uh, that was, the board had discussed that, so they wanted to bring it up to the, uh, the applicants, whether they could do that. So this is the subdivision. Three lot subdivisions of existing house, but not in a great condition, uh, in the front, and conservation has asked for clean restrictions of fifty percent on the second and third lots specifically, not the entire subdivision. So she's taken that back to her clients, so wants to discuss that with you.
Can I have your name for the record?
Sure, Jamison McWilliams, from Crouch McWilliams Law Group at Ten Pantico in East Hampton. Here on behalf of the applicants, Lester Elliston, um, and his daughter, now Rebecca Goran, cause Lester unfortunately passed away.
Passed away, yeah.
Um, so I did get Claire's report, um, the clients are not thrilled about the suggestion of the fifty percent uh, because it's not in any, you know, uh, protection overlay district, there is no clearing restrictions at this time, and, um, although it's, it, it's helpful in one sense that there's no restrictions on lot one, it, the, all of the lots are vegetated, so I'm not entirely sure what the nexus is or, or the requirement on just lots two and three and not lot one, um, but I was more here to, you know, hear the board's position, if, if that was the what the board was going to accept the fifty percent, I was gonna ask that you hold off on accepting the report, and I'm gonna talk to the clients again.
Please, yeah, I mean, you see the rationale that the conservation board provides.
I do, but, but the, those, is that vegetation, is exists on lot one also, or no, I, I thought, yes.
That's been cleared for the house, I mean, that.
Do you have an aerial?
Yeah, I have the aerial. Let's up, see if you can see it. So, um, it's pretty vegetated, the whole thing. The value of this vegetation in the front, though, it's very overgrown, you know, um, we, you know, weedy vegetation, not with...
With the houses.
Yeah, with the houses.
Yeah.
And it backs up to a trail, doesn't it? The lots three, isn't that a trail? If I remember right.
Yeah, it is, yeah, that looks like a trial to me.
Yeah. Where, the blue overlay is a trail?
These are easements, and then just, just the, by looking at that, you see that it's a trail.
Well, if you will discuss it with your client, I mean...
Okay, so I, is it, I don't know the sort of proper protocol here, can, can I poll the board? Like, are you, is it fifty percent, that's everyone's position?
I don't think you should poll the board.
To know.
That's not your job.
It's a recommendation for the, from the Conservation Board.
Okay, so I just wasn't clear, based on the report, that, that, that the board was going to accept that recommendation or not. I did speak to them, they, they, they don't want to do the fifty percent, they were more comfortable with twenty percent. But I don't know how it goes from here, they can't be here today, they actually live in Israel, so the communication has been difficult also.
I'm going to steal a phrase from board member Polo.
Sure.
Uh, the clearing has become death by a thousand cuts.
Yeah.
And we're trying and pushing for... Well, really?
I'm going to write that down, though.
Okay, strike that from the record. That's what we're trying to push against, you know, we're trying to maximize, uh, you know, or minimize clearing as much as we possibly can now. It's, I think it's going to be an ask.
Yeah.
Going forward quite a bit.
Fifty percent to them seems punitive, because it's, you know, they're, they would yield one acre lot, so...
We don't have, where's the, do you have this up on the board, the subdivision?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm giving plans, I have a couple of copies.
Just, just hold it, hold it up.
So the size, the fifty percent is coming from aqua protection, if those lots were that size, they would have that restriction. So I think that's where they're coming from.
That's where they're coming from.
Yeah.
Exactly. But it's not an APOD.
It is not.
So it's a request, and also you're in an archaeologically sensitive area, so you have to do a archaeological review, one A and B.
Yep.
There is a hydrant on the corner, everybody went and checked.
Yes.
So...
And in discussing with your client, you may want to point out, they may not be aware that this does back up to a trail. So that's another aspect of this, is, you know, we have the trails, we're supposed to be for walking and enjoying, you know, the scenery around it, so... Something else they may want to keep in mind.
Can I ask, when you do like a fifty percent limitation like that, is it just like how the clearing would be? Like, it's just overall, or are you doing like a, a buffer or an easement surrounding? Like, would it necessarily be on that back property line? I want to sell it to them, they want this, but they're, you know...
Well, you'd want to maintain, maintain vegetated buffers anyway, and when you run the numbers, it's just...
It's just about...
Probably work out in just a slightly larger buffers, you know, because you want to have the center portion for the house, pool, tenants, whatever. Anyway, you, you can't really do much on the property lines, so...
If it's just clearing as opposed to the buffers, it's not going to be, they're going to need it up to your client.
Right, it won't be designated.
Yeah.
It looks like the center of the property is the heavily tree with some old trees there.
Right.
Claire, would it be possible or reasonable to perhaps provide, um, to your client with, you know, here's some other properties that are one acre, that are fifty percent clearings, they could see what that kind of translates into?
Well, the whole APODs.
Yeah, 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 I, I mean...
Is there anything north?
You have hundreds of house lots with this, with this size of this restriction.
No, I understand that, yeah. I was just curious, because you were discussing how it would, you know, be adjacent or directly adjacent to the trail, if you were going to require it on that back property.
I don't know, the trail, I mean, it's there, but does it connect, do we have something for the Trail Advisory Board? It seems like it's just runs along the back of that property.
You know, trails can...
Because it might, at one time, it might have been used years ago, but now...
They said there's no trail applications.
No trail, so it's just something that, at one time, they traverse, people traverse on that area.
Remember, we talked about it the first time we looked at this.
Oh, do we?
Well, I don't, but I don't know.
Yeah.
What was the fin...
But I don't know, typically, we, we, we grab the trails when there is the potential to link up to, to other areas.
So this trail, though, uh, I don't know.
That might be, I think you might be right, that might be a common driveway easement. See that, the house that's otherwise landlocked there to the, to the south of, that one? It extends from there to the road to the north, which is not Norris, which is, I forget the name.
Well, if a recorded easement, it doesn't, it would show up on your...
Maybe, or a, a shared driveway easement, access easement?
It would show up on your survey, if that were the case, it's not on your survey.
Well, it doesn't burden my lot.
Yeah.
I might, the property, my applicant's lot line is the red, and I think that this runs south of it. I mean, uh, east, north-south, east of that.
Could be, could be an easement, too, yeah.
Just a quick...
I don't know, we didn't...
Double check, so Trails Advisory has not...
They said by memo September fourteenth, say there's no trail applications with this project.
It is not a trail.
It does not, it's not going to impact you.
So maybe you can discuss it with your applicants.
Yes.
Give them some rationale.
I will, okay.
Okay, so do you want to just table this until the issue comes back?
Yep.
Are we back to the line?
It is, however, it's their report, so if they want to, you know, if they want to address it, two weeks or so.
Yeah, can we do two weeks?
Well, two weeks will be Thanksgiving.
Two weeks will be Thanksgiving.
You won't be here?
I'll, I need to get away from my family all year.
Maybe.
So does that take it to December?
We have December fourteenth.
Boy, that is a loaded day.
Well, okay.
Or January.
Next week.
I know, I...
Well, that's...
I have a doctor's appointment, no, it's, it's not that, it's I have a doctor's appointment at two fifteen.
Yeah, noted, yeah.
It's a postpartum thing, it's like, I don't think I should miss that.
It's, it's, it's just a report.
We could adopt the report, and the planning board's recommending...
Recommendation, and then if there's a big issue with your client, then we would have to come back and revisit it.
And you could always amend it.
But we're granting final conditional approval.
No, we don't, we're granting a free...
Oh, that's not good, sorry.
We have a report.
So you could always come back and amend it, and obviously, we have a record where there was a, it was a discussion of the planning boards open to something that achieves their goals.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it is part of the record, Conservation Board recommendation.
So you've got that in here, right, Conservation Board's comments?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, so I'm going to make number two, um, recommendation, planning board recommends that the applicant provide a covenant for fifty percent clearing on lots number two and three, and then with, even say something where the applicant can come back and discuss with the planning board further.
Okay.
And also in that language, put consistent with the standards of the APOD, so we're not...
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a reason.
Oh, the, the other reason is number five, which it is, is more than longer baton of clearance, so, so that is another...
I know, I saw that.
So...
Yeah.
Claire, on, on the, since we're discussing it, on the digital version of the report that you sent me, number three?
Uh-huh.
Lot area on flag lots are less than one and one-half times lot area, the planning board, and that doesn't say anything else?
No, it doesn't.
Is it supposed to? I'm fine with it.
It is, and I...
Okay.
I loved it, but the planning board discussed that, and they were fine with the, uh, the, the lot area not having one and a half times.
Right, okay, okay, just wanted to make sure, since we were all here, okay.
Great, now let's get to check.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we don't, we're scheduled...
No, we're not.
No, we're just going to adopt.
We're just adopting. So motion to adopt the report is amended.
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Craig, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, seven in favor, thank you.
Great.
Okay, um, Teresa's sitting here.
Do you want to, do you want to? You want to go for Delandro?
Sure.
Okay. Back to number four?
Okay, you're running the agenda now, right?
Well, do you want to go?
No, it's okay.
It's up to you. I'm asking him.
We've already asked him.
We don't have to.
Let's do it.
We could do her, you want to do her?
Let's do it, and then I'll call the, I'll call the agenda.
That's great.
What number, four?
Four.
You just stayed put, Wayne, this was all, right, that hallway, wasn't it?
Meeting, Delandro, Jeffrey Delandro. One, three, two, three, Spian Court Red Road, thank you. The secretary has requested that, when I call the agenda, that I give the address of the application, because when she's listening to the minutes to the report, and there's nothing there, it's, it floats somewhere, so...
Especially when you're not in order.
I like it.
Yeah.
I like your assertive statement.
Thank you.
It makes sense, it makes good sense.
And for the public, they're watching it. They, they don't have our trip sheets.
This is like, by the sunrise.
This is the place.
Yeah. Just a poor plan.
It's created, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, it's the elevator.
You showing your points?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's on the same stretch, but the Spian Court Red.
So this is just a review, the staff report, and the deadline is next week. It's pretty straightforward, it is for the construction of a ten-thousand square foot building in line with the design of the one to the north. It's a one-point-six acre parcel, it's not protection overlay district. Uh, in this case also, there is a twenty-five percent clearing restriction pursuant to the covenants, and they've asked for an amendment to the covenants.
Same, same deal, we have to amend.
They have to amend the covenant, yes, they've asked for that, too, and that would be your action next week, if you choose to do, to go forward with it.
Claire, did you also send the Pine Baron Commission?
Yes, that one's attached. It is the last, it is la, it's very similar in language, yes. So public comments, September twenty-eighth, no comments are received during the hearing, no, during the ten-day written comment period.
Claire, could you please speak up, because I haven't read this, so I need to hear you.
Okay, I'm at, I'm on page two, and I'm talking about the public hearing.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Would you like to discuss the referrals?
Yeah, what are they, Claire?
Fire prevention, typical comments.
No.
Street numbers, drainage and drywall rings, supporting the heaviest apparatus of the Eastport Fire Districts, dumpsters to be enclosed, minimum five feet away from buildings, key boxes, installation of fire hydrants, nearest fire hydrant is in excess for a thousand feet, I don't know if that's true again. I don't think they have updated maps.
When did the public water go in, Craig?
I want to say four years ago, four, five years.
That was a while, though.
Is the hydrant indicated here?
When they put them, they usually have them every thousand feet.
We do have a layer here.
Doesn't indicate on here, Claire. It just says water, 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 the long span for that.
Usually, every thousand feet, they have a hydrant, are they recommending additional?
She's got an overland.
Yeah, they were recommending, um, one because it's more than a thousand feet.
Okay.
Oh, here we go, water infrastructure. Doesn't look like this one. Up, yeah, it's down by a priority sites, so...
Well, that's why it's far away.
It's pretty far away.
That might be more than a thousand feet.
Yeah.
That's what it's saying in the report, it is more than a thousand square feet, they're thousand feet away, so they're requiring the installation of a new fire hydrant.
Probably, yeah.
That's why they're...
Yeah.
So they'll have to address that, the applicant will have to address that.
But that's relatively simple, right, when there's public water, they have to just put in a hydrant and run a line in.
I'm not quite sure, I'm sure there will be some costs available associated with it.
But they don't have to run a water line?
No, no, they just have to tap the line.
Just tap into it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we want to go through the special exception standards, Claire?
Sure, did you want to talk about the other referrals?
What have we got in the back?
Uh, Town Engineer has a number of comments, have you addressed any of these today? This is your first time seeing them.
I noticed that what you attached was the preliminary, which we got for the submission, so I'm not sure he was giving you a report on the final.
No, that's what he gave me, is that one. I'm sorry, Wayne, just go to the, sure. So I was going to ask the board, um, the Town Engineer's been a little slow on responding to, you know, updated plans. Do you want to leave these as conditions? They'll have to address them before signature, if that's acceptable to you.
I think so.
Yeah, the report that you have in here was, um, September first, so I'm pretty sure they're, I don't know if he's done the final review, I'll, I'll ask...
Yeah. No, that's, that's, he wants that information before he can, uh, recommend approval, and so, um...
So what does he need now?
Well, the report just says it's a preliminary checklist, so it's odd, but I'll have, our, our client is the engineer, he'll reach out to Tom Houghton and find out what he needs, so...
Yep, that would be great, and it'll have to be done, the board's saying they could do it before signature, if you're acceptable with that.
I mean, the two things that he asked there are just the date of the, uh, the last survey, and, and the, uh, whether the roof drains are piped directly to the drainage system, which, um, you know, they'll have to point that out, so...
Yeah, he's got, uh, some things about the ADA ramp permits, location, and things like that on the second page, so...
I didn't get a second page.
Back, the back of the first, you didn't get it?
No.
Wow. I thought I emailed you, the referrals, right?
There was only one page, so it could...
Oh, no, yeah, there was a second page, yeah, okay, you can have this one.
That's because it's too sad.
I can get a copy of that.
Yeah. Um, so, and then the fire commissioners, do you have any, uh, issues?
Why don't you take this?
Sepia County Planning Commission, um, local determination, the ARB approved it, and then, of course, the Pine Baron comments in the back. So special exception, uh, criteria, I didn't, um, oh, did you want to talk about the Pine Barrens or the hazardous waste?
I was just reading them.
Pine Barrens is forty-nine point nine percent clearing, uh, where fifty percent is permitted, obviously, the covenant will be amended. And that was on the bottom of page two.
Yeah, the Pine Baron regulation is actually sixty-five percent for industrial, and the town is fifty percent more restrictive, so...
The town is more restrictive, yeah.
Right, but this was also a covenant in a minor subdivision done in that period between eighty-four and eighty-nine that imposed a more restrictive, which the code allows you to amend, to be consistent now with the code requirements, which is fifty percent. So otherwise, we meet all the compatible growth area requirements of the town code, which is what the Pine Barrens is asking you to make sure that this project is complying with.
So you want to do special exceptions, Claire?
Yes, um, yes, so I have identified no issues, it's compliant with a mall, it's obviously vacant piece of property, so the access is correct. Um, they're allowed up to seven uses with requirement five. The only really specific, uh, covenant, I mean, standard is about the parking, and that is also compliant, is, uh... The only really specific covenant, I mean, standard is about the parking, and that is also compliant, is generating 30 spaces, but I think they're proposing 43 on the property, so it's going to be an IA system. And they're not proposing any outdoor storage at this time. And there's no specific requirements. There's two, as I mentioned, there's the two 50-foot scenic buffers, and that provides a nice buffer for the property to meet those standards. So, again, site plan standards are met. I have included on the, on page seven, going to eight, the standard language with the energy conservation. So I've identified no issues with this. I'll do a resolution for the next meeting with some conditions.
Are we asking for any sustainability issues? Any solar or anything like that? Are we including that?
That was the energy conservation comments. It's the typical language that we've been working on, and every time we have a site plan, we add some more language to it.
The glory of the earth, I see it.
Yep.
Where, what, where is it? Number N.
The one thing.
N on page seven.
Yeah. The one thing I would say is, you know, you do ask for, have been asking for
Electric.
The charging stations.
Charging stations.
So one per 20 spaces. In this case, it would be two, if they do do that.
Yeah.
So I think that would be a condition of approval, to show that.
Okay, you've got that in there, good.
Yep.
Good.
Just a sidebar for a second. I just recently found out that the electric, the electric car charging stations are not universal.
No, they're not.
No. The Times had a whole big spiel about, I wish I'd saved that.
Yeah.
Tesla said they were going to become universal. I don't know if that's true. If they were the oddball.
Tesla's going to be the kind of charging station.
Are you saying Elon's an awful?
And cars that don't have Tesla will have adaptations starting next year.
Adapt, yeah.
So which ones, which ones come standard for every other car other than Tesla?
No, most other manufacturers now are adopting Tesla's NCS, NCS charging code. That's from 2025, they're going to be adopting that.
The structure in the United States, so it makes sense.
So any other questions? For Claire, Claire? So I guess it's good we can adopt it next week.
Yes. We will adopt the decision and the covenant.
Let's go to Teresa. You have Michael Minkoff? Let's do this.
Thank you. There was no motion.
What?
There was no motion.
There was no motion. We did not.
We didn't do a motion.
Did we?
No, no, because it's just a draft.
Yeah, just a draft.
Make up.
There's no action.
My gosh, yeah, I got my pre-submission.
We can share a couple for share. These are to share.
Hi. Look, I'm prepared today. So the.
So let me just give the address. Michael Minkoff, 297 County Road 39.
The property is, the applicant is looking to convert the existing 7,500 square foot auto garage repair shop into a special trade contractor, and to construct 29 parking stalls inclusive of six, which were housed inside the building, as well as a new fence. The SEACRA is an unlisted action.
So Teresa, can you set up the?
Yes, oh, sorry.
So that the irregular shape of this is apparent?
Yes.
This is right next to, this is right next to the North Side.
Oh, 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 yeah.
So this is an existing.
The address is County Road 39.
Yeah.
It's a suburban auto.
On this map.
So, as I said, this building is currently an auto repair garage, and there are six bays. So they're intending to convert this into a special trade contractor, potentially with indoor warehousing for the contractor, and six indoor parking spaces, which would be allowed because they're not stacking the parking, because they do have six bays. A pre-submission conference was held October 12th, and again, SEACRA will need to be completed before deeming the site plan complete. Certificate of Compliance was issued for the repair shop, and again, special trade contractor. Prior to, or when they submit the formal site plan application, they'll need to note how much of the building will be used for indoor storage and warehousing, because that may change their parking calculations. There is a concern with respect to access for the property. The plan currently calls for, well, existing right here is about 13 feet, where access should be 15 feet for safety purposes. So the report is recommending that they speak to the fire marshal, or try and seek an easement for the neighbor in order to provide sufficient access to the rear of the parcel where all the parking will be occurring.
Especially if they're going to have, this is special trade contractor, right?
Yes.
You're going to bring trucks, it's one thing, this is a repair shop with automobiles, but now they're proposing to intensify the use of truck traffic back there. I don't see how this works.
That, that's probably, that's a major issue, right?
Yeah.
That's why they need to speak to the fire marshal, or if they can get an easement, and that they have sufficient access, that can be done. If they can't get the easement, or they can't get sufficient access, then
It doesn't mean special exception.
Special exception standards may not be.
Yeah, because they have to, I mean, of the 13 general standards, as you know, one of the first few is properties suitable, you know, for this use.
For use.
This came up years ago, and we had a landscape problem here in Hampton Bays. It was like a long, thin, skinny piece, and they wanted to put a landscaping contract, and we just looked at it and said.
Can't do it.
Right.
Doesn't work.
So.
They could modify the building, they could, you know.
They could be so.
But that's all, they don't want to do anything to the building.
No, they want to keep the building as is. And if they can get an easement from the neighbor, they may be able to provide sufficient access. I mean, it's about two and a half feet, so it's really not that much. But again, it is an issue, it is a major issue, which could prevent approval of this project if you don't have safe access.
And what about circulation in the rear? So that's also an issue.
Well, that is, that is also an issue. If you'll go on to the next one, it does say that the parking plan needs to be revised to provide ADA compliant parking stalls, and to demonstrate sufficient area for truck circulation. Also, truck loading, dependent on the type of contractor, should be provided, right? The parking standards do require truck loading, and for a special trade contractor, that should be shown, and that's not currently shown. So that's, that's another hurdle that needs to be reviewed and considered as part of the project. However, if portions of the existing structure are going to be used for warehousing, that is a lower parking standard, so that may give them some more flexibility on designing their parking, aside from the access issue, you know.
Teresa, who's, what is the neighbor next door that they might have to get a?
Norfolk.
This is Norfolk.
Norfolk is on the other side.
No, Norfolk is next door.
Yeah. Norfolk is on the, on the western side.
This is the new building here.
New building for Norfolk?
It's now, no longer Norfolk, it's Windsor, right? It's old.
No, it's Norfolk now, I believe it's the Car Museum?
Yeah, it's Norfolk. They're storing their porta potties in there.
Oh, okay.
And what's to the east?
To the east?
Odd piece, yeah.
I thought Norfolk is sold.
It looks like it is a house.
Yeah.
A residence.
A residence, correct.
Wow.
Yeah, it looks like there's several residences over here, actually. So the next item on the report is garbage. The site plan that they provided did not provide any dumpsters or, you know, garbage receptacles. A landscape plan will also be needed as part of the formal site plan application. If you drive by here, you can see it's quite a lot of asphalt along the front, with no screening of the existing building. Landscape plan should probably provide some screening there. Let me just see.
Yeah, right now it's one big open slab.
Yeah, it's just open.
So as you can see, it's very open. There's no screening, there's no softening of the building. It's a very square building, so the landscape plan should provide something here along the road for screening, to soften that appearance. Because the site is currently used as an auto repair shop, consideration, which I highlighted here, consideration of an environmental assessment should be done, and undertake, well, you should consider whether or not you want that undertaken, to see if there are any oil leaks, oil spills that need to be remediated as part of the project. The sustainability issues with respect to green design elements, rooftop solar, electric charging stations, should also be incorporated during the final site, formal site plan process. And then because the use is changing, they should reach out to the health department to see if it does require a change in their septic system design flows, and possibly an upgrade of their septic system.
Good, very thorough. Any other questions?
Yeah, if I can just go back to the choke point issue for a minute there. I think that the choke point, of course, is in the front corner of the building. I think it extends all the way down the length of the building. Now, the survey doesn't show how much distance there is from the back end of the building to the property line. I'm guessing that to be maybe 20 feet, so. The whole distance, if there was an easement, I think it would have to be the whole length of the building
Yeah.
to accommodate, because there's now going to be two-way traffic. Again, if it was an auto repair shop, the mechanics that are fixing the cars are driving in and driving out. Now you've got a bunch of different people driving in and out that whole length of that building.
With much larger vehicles.
Much larger vehicles.
Are those trees planted? I mean, the aerial, that's an old aerial. Did Norfolk plant those trees yet?
No.
I don't think so.
I can, I can actually look that up in a second.
That is not the same.
It's a heavy use.
That's not our plan.
Oh, yes, what happened to you?
Nope, nope.
All right, fine, we'll just go with the airport.
Can we, can we let Carl just jump in?
I'll just drop that information.
Good morning, members of the board. Carl Bonacasa, 860 Montauk Highway for the applicant. First, I would just note in the project description, if we could note that warehouse use. The application did not note it. I noted it at the hearing, and Teresa certainly discussed it today, so I'd like that just to be added in the project description.
To warehouse and special trade contractor?
Mm-hmm, yes. Or special.
Is it?
One or the other, right?
Is it, so, is it indoor storage for the special trade contractor, or is it a separate warehouse?
It's a separate warehouse use.
I believe that's going to be a problem with respect to number of uses allowed on the property.
No, it's compliant, and it's a less intense use.
To be a warehouse.
With respect to parking and those elements, yeah. If you want to investigate that before you commit to updating it, I just, that's our request.
I will, well, this is just a review of the draft report. We'll adopt it next week. I can look into that. And I'll speak to you afterwards, after I've done my research.
But you made application for a warehouse.
The application was for a special trade contractor use. At the hearing, that's right. At the hearing, we mentioned, we want to do, we want to also consider part of the site plan to be a separate warehouse use. So if you want us to submit amended application, that was discussed at the hearing. I don't think we need another pre-submission hearing. I would just note that we changed the pre-submission report to reflect a potential warehouse use as well.
But you see the issues here, Carl. The access is pretty tricky, you know.
As you know, these are existing site conditions, certainly not planned. I would just defer to the fire marshal as recommended in the report, as far as safety with respect to access. I think that's the reasonable approach. 15 feet to address what Mr. Neely was saying, 15 feet in width occurs not, you know, probably 10 feet into that choke point.
Right.
It would be compliant. If there is two-way traffic, certainly we can arrange for general accommodation of any incidental two-way traffic. I think the major concern, the larger concern would be emergency vehicle access.
Just to go back, as of September 5th, they did install the trees along the property line.
They did?
Oh, yes, look, they did, yeah.
There they are.
September 5th, this, this near map stuff is great. It's every few months we get the updated maps.
Look at the foliage to the east, and more.
Yeah.
I haven't seen trees like that in a long time.
Carl, is your, what are the possibilities of modifying the building? Like, cutting a piece of it off?
I can't tell, I don't know what, how that, structurally, that corner plays a role in.
It's a one-story building.
Yeah.
So it's not holding a lot of, that might be your only way.
Just slice that corner off? I think the easement's probably preferable, but the trees are there now.
Yeah, the trees are there.
How about the other?
I think it's easier to move trees than a, than a corner.
Yeah, but you control, your client controls the quarter.
The client controls the corner, yes.
And obviously, they don't look.
You know, this does operate as a, as you know, it operates with that existing lot coverage.
But it's designated for cars.
Cars.
For cars, but.
Now we're contemplating trucks.
Tow trucks as well, you know, these.
Yeah, tow trucks, which is, now we're contemplating intensifying to, to, well, you mentioned warehousing, which suggests trucks and deliveries. If we, if we go forward with this use, we have to assume that it's going to entail
A tractor trailer?
The typical vehicles associated with that use.
Yeah, and if the fire marshal were to determine that, that the proposed use and the intensity of it can be accommodated by the existing width of that access, I think that would, that should weigh highly with it.
The fire marshal's going to say, it's been there, you know, we have to deal with what's there.
That's right.
But we're, now, you're asking this board to change the use, intensify it, and contemplate a different type of traffic pattern. So that's why.
What, what is the basis for saying it's an intensified use between a special trade contractor?
Because it's going from automobile traffic, primarily automobile traffic, to special trade contractor suggests trucks. And warehousing absolutely suggests trucks, delivery trucks, whether it be tractor-trailer, mountain trucks. If we, in other words, we can't put in a warehouse use to say, oh, but don't bring tractor-trailers, don't bring box trucks in, don't bring large, you know. We can't put those limitations on it. So if we go forward with that intent, it's an intensification traffic-wise.
And traffic is going to be more. A car goes in when it's to be repaired, it goes in and then it comes out. I'm assuming this is going to be more in and out, which suggests to me that you have to have two-way traffic. Otherwise, you need a cop there to make sure that when someone has to get out, they can get, you know, it's.
Well, there are ways to mitigate the safety impacts with mirrors, and it operates two-way traffic now, certainly.
Cars.
Yeah, cars, yes.
I wonder if you could get some kind of access through the Norfolk property, in the middle of the Norfolk property. Do you have?
Access off the Norfolk property?
Off of Sandy Hollow Road?
Like over here, through this parking area? This, this area here? Well, I mean, that's a possibility.
But you'd have to negotiate it with them, Carl.
And, you know, the easements would have to be perpetual. That's the problem with the easement aspect.
And Norfolk is coming in off of Sandy Hollow.
Yeah.
It's kind of triangle.
Yes, it's coming off of Sandy Hollow. I think that.
It's a one-story building.
Access off of that would create a lot, I would be surprised if they would be willing to do that.
On a, on another note, I just confirm, Claire, a second use is not going to be allowed, because it's one use per 20,000 square feet. This is a 30,000 square foot.
So they're limited to one use, right? So Carl, what's the structure of the building? Cinder block?
The current building, yes, it's a cinder block, yeah.
Well.
It's, you're not.
That is just two, three feet off.
All right, well, let's get the bulldozer and go.
Do they want, do they want to do that?
Wet saw.
It's a tricky.
Concrete cutters and.
Well, if there's only one use, I don't, don't.
And it's either warehouse or.
The applicant has to make a decision as to what they want.
I do realize that I forgot to add that, whether or not you want a traffic impact study on this parcel.
Yeah.
Anything off.
So I will add that prior to next week's.
I mean, that's what we did, we put Norfolk off of Sandy Hollow, because that's such a problematic spot.
Particularly because it goes right into the feed into Sandy Hollow.
You know, and regardless of what intensification of use, or less intense use, it still has to comply with the present day code.
That's why we did that whole thing.
Well, just, just.
Do we set up cross-axis?
Fire marshal approval, yes.
I don't know, I couldn't look that up.
You're absolutely right.
I can bring that back next week. I can bring, I can bring that back next week.
Maybe cross-access, when we did Norse.
You want cross-access from the Norse-
From your side into Norse, but I don't know if we ever set that up.
They could get in and out, you know?
I, I, my gut is that would be, I don't know that they would go for that. It would be pretty-
Well, it might be already-
The Norse would go for that.
No, but we may have.
We might have it in place.
I think we have it.
We have it.
You have it, right?
Yeah, I think we have a general cross-access.
Yeah.
You have for that, with relates to, to that site plan?
Yeah.
The, the new one?
Yeah.
We'll check it.
That wasn't looked at?
I didn't, I'm trying. Can't think of anything.
You could have looked at it.
Then you could have screened the whole.
It would have been a better one.
That's a little more accusational than I intended. So we can, yeah, if there is cross-access there, that solves all our problems.
Yeah.
You'd have to negotiate with them for-
No, no.
No, it's, it's open.
They would have the access.
You'd open it with this, with this application.
Sure. It reduces the problem. And more important, we, we might want extended-
It would eliminate the problem.
We, we'd also want your gut, your client to extend it to the east.
To provide cross-access.
To the, to the residential parcel?
Well, they're, they're on highway business, right?
Yeah.
So at some point, they're going to come into highway business use. Yeah.
So there, okay, Carl, do you, do you want to adopt this?
Yeah, get it.
No.
No, it's going to be next week, uh, just for discussion purposes, and then we'll bring it back with all those other issues outlined.
Okay, Carl?
Uh, so we'll look at the cross-access, and that seems to solve all the issues I have. Yeah, that does not solve all my issues.
Great. A separate meeting, Carl.
Anthony, you want to do Rothman?
Rothman, yes.
What happened to, no, it's a little worse, because we're not going back to the beginning.
This is item eight.
Eight, Rothman Dynasty, twenty-seven Lower Seven Ponds Road Water Mill.
Yeah, the board will remember, um-
We've seen this a hundred and eleven times.
It's a hundred and twelve now, and, uh, unfortunately, Daphne could not have had an emergency. She couldn't be here today.
Okay.
Um, which she knows also, we're still waiting on the two ninety-two from conservation and the highway department regarding that access off of Seven Pond out.
Yep.
Uh, so we're putting, we're going to do an extension here until December fourteenth.
Motion.
Motion by Dennis, second by Kate, all in favor, opposed extensions, seven in favor. Are we, are you taking a look at December fourteenth? I mean, we could sink to the bottom of the ocean with everything that's on December seventh, fourteenth.
Yeah, I split my stuff up between the next two meetings, and so, yeah, so we, we should.
Now you're cold.
I wasn't, I wasn't hot.
I think, what happened last night?
This happens every year.
Is Crowley brief?
Um, Crowley, um, Kevin Springer had to leave for an emergency, so his is also going to be extended.
Extension.
That one, that one is till December fourteenth. That's an easy one, though, so.
Okay, so number eleven, Seven Canal Street Hampton Bay, is extension to December fourteenth. A motion?
Motion.
Motion by Dennis, second by Craig, all in favor, opposed extensions.
Did we pass a resolution on Rothman?
I don't think we did.
You did, on Rothman.
Did we do, did we do the-
Okay, so number eight.
Yeah, we did.
An extension to December fourteenth.
I think we just said we were moving it.
Did we do?
Did we vote on it?
For Rothman, we did?
We did, okay. Thank you.
The other one was for Crowley.
They both December fourteen.
Okay, Claire, you want to come back with Capital One?
Of course.
Capital One, address ninety-five East Montauk Highway.
So this was spent, it's going to be the fourth bank, North Fourth Bank, Capital One,
and, and now Bank of America.
That's when everyone's going into online banking.
This building is such a beautiful building you used.
One of the nicer ones.
Yeah, so I have a resolution. I'll pass that up to you. Um, basically, they're doing a few basic signs with the goose necks, Bank of America, um, white letters.
We need a few more.
Um, I, I really encouraged them to do something that was very in keeping with the building itself. So they're doing the white letters with the goose necks on the building. That sign will be a little bit more color to it, but it's not on the building itself. So those are the three underings for the building, so, um, we have-
Well, that's the building that's unused right now as a bank, but it was a bank.
Right, exactly.
It was a bank, it was another bank, too.
Yeah.
It's not that a couple- So, get the ARB and cue their approval for it. Um, so I, I like the ones on the, on the building, I think they're traditional, so just a little bit more color to the monument sign. So I'll take a look at that.
And how is this lit? Is this backlit, Carl?
No, so there's lights, um, on the top and a little, the wash down.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I want to specify, uh, in the resolution, I'm going to specify the lighting on it. So the goose necks and then the, the lighting and the wash, the wash down.
Okay.
So, I'm ready to approve.
For the monument sign?
We don't, we don't have resolutions here. Claire, did you-
Draft in progress, Claire, did, what are we doing? Is this for the next week?
Draft in progress, there's one there. Wasn't there enough copies?
No, no.
Sorry.
Yeah, they're right here.
I don't know what happened to those. So we're resolving that the monument sign is good, and what else, anything?
Yeah, so the wall and the monument signs are good, exterior lighting, uh, goose necks on the wall sign, and then the fine, um, exterior direct lighting on the monument sign. There's some additional language over there.
Okay, but so that's, there, be it resolved, you have three things to resolve, right?
I didn't keep myself a copy.
I have a copy here.
Page one, is there, is there a page two?
Yeah, Claire, this is all screwed.
Can I be at fault?
You only have one thing. The monument sign shall indicate the street address. Two, goose neck, that's all you put in. So the two is goose neck, um-
Maybe there is only one.
I didn't finish my idea.
See, it was a draft and thought.
Oh, draft and progress.
So, my, my warehouses are all good, two, one, two, three, four, five. So five approves the monument signs, acceptable subject of monument sign indicating the address, um-
Two wall signs, right?
Right, so that, that will be the result, that you approve the wall, the two wall signs and the monument sign as shown in the plans that are detailed above by Strauss.
And they- And the lighting?
And the lighting. I'd like to specify that the wall signs will be goose neck.
Okay, so wall signs lit by goose neck.
And this monument sign will be the exterior lighting.
And the monument sign. Well, that's the indirect.
Oh, actually, I take it back.
I thought you said there was no lighting on the monument sign.
Isn't it in the sign on the top?
I think it's on the top, right?
So I thought they were doing that, but no, non, it says non-illuminated.
Uh-huh.
So, I, maybe I'll have a condition that says this monument sign is non-illuminated. Any additional lighting will come back to the plan.
Right, okay. Okay. So we have the language, that's in the one, two, three, four, the fifth warehouse. Then we have wall signs lit by goose neck, monument sign not illuminated.
Mm-hmm.
And the goose neck, you want to put the goose neck as a condition, as a resolved?
It's shown as a goose neck on the plans, so that's what we are approving.
Okay, goose neck is okay.
Yep.
Is everybody clear with their doing?
Yeah, I mean, they have a good rendering there of their signage concept and lighting plan, right?
Mm-hmm.
So this is what will be announced.
And they're the only tenant in there, right?
They will be the only tenant in there.
Yeah. All right, motion to approve the Capital One Bank, uh, which is becoming
Bank of America.
Bank of America. Motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Tom?
Second.
Second by Kate, all in favor, opposed extension, seven in favor. Butter Lane, okay, that, six twenty-five Butter Lane is adjourned by the applicant till next week?
December.
No, to, to December fourte, uh, December twelfth?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
There's no action, there's no deadline on covenant.
There's no deadlines. We don't have to do an action. They have res, um, submitted a request for the adjournments, obviously, but also they included a new alternative for the envelope. Um, I sent, we sent, emailed that to you, and I do have additional copies for you.
Yeah.
Um, do you want me to refer that to the Egg Advisory Committee?
Aren't they, well, aren't they doing it? I mean, I thought that-
You're the entity, you're the entity that's making the decision, so I'd recommend that you formally do that.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I, I've read an awful lot of stuff.
Yeah.
And if I could ask counsel, are, are we supposed to get a site plan?
I think we addressed that in the closed session for advice of counsel.
Okay.
We're, we're following the procedure we're following, and we're-
Thank you. I'm reading a lot.
So this is one action, this is one application, there's no time mandate on.
No time mandate, so fourteenth comes and Jackie feels the agenda's too full, it will not be on the-
Yeah, it's too heavy.
Yeah, I know it's heavy.
And we don't have to take an action today. We don't have the extent.
You don't have the extent.
So we don't have, just announce that it was adjourned.
Yes.
Okay, six twenty-five Butter Lane has been adjourned. Okay. Theresa, you want to come back up?
Are we on twelve?
Number twelve, Koroski Subdivision, twenty Central Avenue, East Quahog.
Here's some maps for you.
Going to be shared, I have reason to.
Okay, so the parcel is twenty Central Avenue in East Quahog. They are looking to subdivide the existing parcel into two lots, one with the existing home, and then this rear lot. Um, as you can see, there are various accessory structures which will not meet the required setbacks, so those will need to be addressed. But, um, what we're doing at this moment in time is deeming the pre-application complete, and then scheduling a public hearing, which is, uh, I have tentatively checked with, uh, Kristen, and it's January eleventh. Uh, so, um, January eleventh is the recommended public hearing for the pre-app, on the application.
Is, just as, as a question, are twenty zoning, are they functioning as a commercial?
No, I believe it's actually a residential garage. I drove by there the other day, and it looked, looked kind of like a house with some, a lot of stuff, but, uh, it's hard-
Lots of cars, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're deeming it complete and setting a public hearing for January eleventh, twenty fourteen. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria and second by Dennis, all in favor, opposed extensions, seven in favor. Anthony, you've got ninety North Sea Meacocks? Ninety North Sea Meacocks Road, North Sea?
Yeah, even my chair is icy.
The board might recall, this was started some time ago with Jackie when she was here, uh, North Sea Meacocks Road. I can zoom out here a little bit. This is a vacant piece of property. Um, it is in the, let's see where I am. It's in the R twenty zoning district. This is the application, uh, from the Southampton Housing Authority um, for an affordable housing development on this property. I don't know if the board remembers. It seems to be, if I remember, there's a, some junkyard or something over here, but, uh, this is the property that the board had previously seen, um, an application, and had worked with the applicant to, really was to, to get to a, a yield map, um, we knew exactly, I don't know how many lots. It's a rectangular piece of property. It's not, you know, a lot of layout options at this point, but the first map was to establish what the yield would be. And here we're looking at five lots, okay? Now, that was, this, this yield map I was okay with. I was waiting to make sure we had the property yield map. So, I can see we could proceed with five of them. What they're also providing is an alternative, and even though this is, uh, all affordable housing proposal, uh, you still get the ten percent density of the Long Island R four housing, so if you have a yield of five, we could get another six, and so they provided, um, a six-lot plan. Um, same type of layout, but just, uh, with one extra lot, and they're showing all flag strips here. That could probably be an issue ultimately.
Shouldn't it just be shared, I mean, access but shared?
Yeah, they, they, ultimately would be a shared or one, you know, but they're just showing flag lots, uh, for each of the lots. That's a comment we could address in a pre, you know, application report.
There's public water there, right?
What's that?
There's public water there, right?
Yeah, there's public water. Uh, so at this point, we're finally, it's been a year, uh, but, uh, I'd like to help the battle of it, deem this application complete finally. Um, I think we have three hearings out for the fourteenth, and I was up for December fourteenth. You don't want to do December fourteenth? Okay, so, uh, January eleventh, do you agree, are you okay with that?
Yes.
So January eleventh?
Better.
Is there a single-family ownership model?
These would be single-family.
Ownership?
Ownership, yeah.
Covenant?
They would be restricted, uh, as well, it's the housing authority doing it anyway, so, uh, that their purpose is to provide for it.
What's the size of the lots?
Uh, on the six-lot plan, they're, you know, twenty-one to twenty-three thousand, about half acre. Nice size of lots.
Yeah, in the R twenties.
Yeah.
And is Sandy Hollow the next road to the east, uh, to the west?
To the east.
I think it's North, North Sea Road.
That's Major's Path, I'm sorry.
Major's Path, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's between Major's Path and Sandy Hollow.
Yes.
Anthony, what are the blue overlay lines?
These blue lines?
Or, oh, that's North Sea Road.
No, no, next to the bus.
Those are easements?
Those are easements. The, whatever those easements are, by the way, it just identifies easement, so they could be a conservation or an access.
But then you can go into the-
You can go in and check.
And get what it is, right?
So we can see this one complete and schedule the hearing for January eleventh.
A lot of other small lots like that around.
Yeah, that for sure, definitely, you know, half acre, sorry.
Not, not a typical area.
That's right, that's right.
Okay, so we don't have a report on this.
No, not yet, it's just, it's just a completion.
Okay, motion to, um, deem this complete and, and schedule a public hearing for January eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Motion by Craig, second by Kate, all in favor, opposed extensions, seven in favor. Three fourteen North McGee Street.
Okay.
Three fourteen North McGee Street.
What happens, happens to ninety North Sea Meacocks, I, we just did that.
Three fourteen North McGee Street, I'll show it.
My head, my head got frozen.
You don't feel it.
Three fourteen North McGee.
Wait, this is incomplete. So we have a property here on North McGee. We've seen a few of these on, on North McGee Street in Tuckahoe. It's an R twenty zone, New York State Archaeological Sensative Area, kind of existing residents, uh, down here in the front. And potentially some adjacent encroachments here in the back. Uh, this is a pre-application. Um, should note that we have town open lands, uh, to the rear here, and all this is, is protected town land. This application's actually incomplete. Uh, Carl Bonacasa is the representative. Um, they provided a, a, a cluster plan. They show a four-lot cluster plan with some open space in the rear of the property to be adjacent to-
The town land.
Show a little thing at the front, so I already told Carl, they try to protect trees. Uh, we could do that through buffers and put the open space in the back, um, but we don't have a yield map for this one, um, so we're going to-
Incomplete.
It's incomplete, and Carl's aware of that, so.
It's in the works.
It's in the works.
Motion to deem it incomplete by Dennis, second by Gloria, and all in favor, opposed extensions, seven in favor. Two oh four Butter Lane, Bridge Hampton.
The board, this was the e- The board, this was the Equinox, uh, physical fitness facility...
Yeah.
On Butter, uh, to utilize the existing building for like an appointment-only physical, uh, none of the board remembers this one.
Yeah.
Um, so, this one required going to the Zoning Board of Appeals because of the parking, um, which they were successful with, with plenty of board's advice.
They've come in with the formal application. Um, I'm still waiting on the engineer's comments, um, and, uh, so we're going to deem this one incomplete as well.
Motion? Motion by Kate.
Second.
Second by Gloria, all in favor.
Aye.
Post extensions, uh, seven in favor. Claire, your Seahorse Horse Stables at 4 Whispering Fields Court?
Yeah.
In Watermelon.
Yeah, it's also called TAHA, I guess Tahoe One or something. That's another name for it, but I will relabel that. Uh, this is, um, for modification to the horse farm, for some additional, uh, sheds and changing some exercise rings. It is in order, it is have everything we need to process the application. I was just ju, double-checking with, uh, Kristen. Um, I always recommend the 11th, but that would be the fourth one, uh, on that date. Does that sound reasonable? Doesn't, I don't think it'll be very controversial.
No.
You're, you're looking at December 11th?
Eleven, January 11th.
January 11th, goes three on for that.
And it's complete, Claire?
It is complete, it's got, it's a working horse farm, it's the maximum number of people.
CR120 with question mark. Do you know what zone it is?
Oh, it, that's, uh, the labeling issue with the...
It's just CR120.
Which is failing on us.
It's CR120. They're going to change all of them, they should have a new thing to learn.
I know. Um, so, yeah, so I, I would recommend January 11th. I think it should be a pretty straightforward application.
So it's complete?
Mm-hmm.
January 11th, 2024, motion?
Motion.
By Gloria, second by Craig, all in favor.
Aye.
Post extensions, seven in favor. And we have Wave Center, 144 Mariner, consider completeness. Oh, this is one, well, 54 Montauk Highway in Watermelon.
Yeah, this is the...
Oh, this is the veterinarian, uh...
Yeah, this is the one, I was going to suggest, uh, oh, never mind. It still needs its ZBA, so they submitted the application in anticipation that ZBA would be coming next week. Um, I have to deem it incomplete because it doesn't meet code, uh, for the setbacks.
Oh, beside your setbacks?
Needs a 50-foot setback for any buildings from...
The way it's angled.
The way it's angled, right.
But they're, they've gone to ZBA for...
That relief.
Relief.
From the special exception standard of the...
But the building already exists.
The building already exists.
Ethan Allen was the tenant, yeah.
Right, they're changing it from, um, Ethan Allen, which is retail permitted, to the vet services, which is a special exception. So it needs that special exception, uh, standard of the 50 feet to be waived.
Okay.
Yeah. So, uh...
Claire.
We need to inc, deem it incomplete, but I'll bring it back on the 14th if they get the ZBA decision, so we can process the application.
Okay. Motion to deem it incomplete?
Motion.
By Craig, second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Post extension, seven in favor. Then we've got, um, 1004 Montauk Highway.
Down the street.
Now, which one is this?
This is a vacant piece of property...
Oh, it's vacant, yes.
That was recently cleared.
Weird.
Violation.
Yeah, it's grown, all grown back in.
The applicants' representatives here.
It's right next to the ga, it's east of the gas station, um...
It's east.
Why is that funny? Will, what is that street, that funny street? Gallagher's Automotive, it's on it.
Oh, oh, yeah.
You know, is that Will?
It's not a, it's not a real street, though, it says Highway to Deerfield?
Yeah, Willow, well, some of it's, yeah.
Willow, Willow, you can, you can come all the way.
It's a cutoff, yeah.
Yeah. And it's, and you get into the Deerfields by the rail tracks.
Yeah, it's not, it's not calling it anything.
It is, I, it's got a name on it.
Yeah, yeah, that's, the, uh, the engineer says it's a highway to Deerfield Road.
Yeah, probably in survey.
Yeah. So, um, this is an application to do a medical office building, I think it's a two-story.
Another medical office.
Yes, yes, so, um, the, I did ask them for elevations, and that's with the pre-submission. And they do have renderings also. So this is the, this is the renderings that are provided. It's a, a lot of pretty modern building. Actually, reminds me of the one in West Hampton.
Building we've seen before, the same architecture?
Looks like the building in West Hampton. They, they even, really with that one?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, Overhang Road.
Yeah. Yeah.
People have given up on overhangs and roofs, you know? Which is too bad. And how many? It's, it's a 40,000 square foot parcel, and the building is... HP? It's good, okay.
Where are we going to get all these doctors to fill these buildings?
Great question.
That's right. That's why you, we got, HHS asking the special authorities that.
Everybody is...
It's not the opposite corner of that whole white historic building that doesn't know what it wants to be.
Yeah. I dropped out of everything.
Yeah.
That's a cut-off.
True.
Do you want to speak?
Uh, we, you, okay.
All right, so this is, uh, setting a, um...
Pre-submission conference, I think our next date is January 25th.
Claire, this is complete? You're, you're satisfied?
It is, we've got the basement information to process the pre-submission conference.
Okay. So, motion to, uh, deem this complete and schedule a public hearing January 25, 2024. A motion by Dennis, second by Gloria.
Setting a pre-submission conference, right? A public, not public hearing, or pre-submission conference?
Pre-submission conference is a public.
Right, right.
Here, the public comes. Yeah.
Correct, sorry.
So motion, uh, did, did I take a vote?
Yes.
Not yet.
No, you just said, no.
We have a motion and second.
Motion, we have motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post extension, seven in favor.
Hey, cleared the room, just about.
Pretty much. Claire, you have just two more, so why don't you go on?
Did we say something?
23 Ocean Road Real Estate.
Did we say something?
I love it.
That's an extension, right?
Oh, yeah.
Which item is that?
Number 23, Ocean Road Real Estate.
Oh.
412 and 426 Ocean Road. An extension to...
Um, yeah, I'm sorry, it's an extension for 90 days.
Extension to 90 days. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Dennis, all in favor.
Aye.
Post extensions. And Claire, your last one is, is not, is not to run up a signature?
I haven't seen the paperwork.
That's actually off the agenda.
What, which item?
24, uh, Conscious Point.
24, Conscious Point, Selfish Hat Tree, all.
Yes.
Okay. Anthony, you are number 19. Now, wait a minute, didn't we do number one?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Anthony, your Harborview Landing, 320 East Montauk Highway.
Yeah, so, this, we got an application in, um, East Montauk Highway here. So here it's coming in, this is the area where Edgewater is, and then further to the, uh, to the east there, you have this property, um...
East or west?
East.
To the east, I'm sorry, yeah. Yep, to the east here. They, they came in, um...
This is the one, they have the signs that you read one after the other?
Yeah, actually, that's further up. The High, High and John?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a little further up.
Fr, which way do you mean a further up?
To the east, yeah.
Okay.
So... So it's this property, um, just give you the street view because it's just easier to see.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we got an application to do some renovation work on this, uh, structure right in the middle here. Uh, we're going to deem this application incomplete because we need some more information from the applicant, which I requested. This is, uh, motel zone, they have CO for motel units, right? This is, um, but there seems to be some indication that these are rental units. Um, what I thought was going to be an easy application, I need more information because we'll probably have to take the opportunity now to get things corrected, but...
For full housing?
Yeah, potentially, full-time, full-time.
Yeah, there, but, you know, there's a question that these are not being used as, as motel units. So, I alerted the applicant, I asked to provide some more supporting information. I gotta Google, I have to pull files, so we'll deem this one incomplete.
And this was requested to be expedited?
Initially, yeah, and I, and I advise them as that, um, just because I said, oh, it looks like you're doing, and the renovation work looks nice. Um, it was just when you get the application, you start doing research and then things pop up.
Is there a CMO on this?
There is, and it's for, it's for motel.
Problem issue.
So, we'll deem it incomplete, and I'll continue.
What is the maximum length of stay at a motel?
There's two types of motels. So it's transient up to two weeks, and then there's ones that you can do weeks weekly. That's more like a resort.
If you're not allowed to do year-round, has, has the code enforcement been alerted?
Here, I'll tell you right now. There had been something a while ago on this, because they did work, uh, so somebody did issue a violation in February, work without the benefits of permit. Yeah, updates, it says two-story dwellings and two, two-story motel units. See that there's questions all over the place that have been acknowledged by code enforcement, so we'll just deem this incomplete and try to get the information. And then, and then to advise the applicant how to proceed, or what the procedure would be. So we'll just deem this one.
Okay, motion to deem this incomplete?
Motion.
By Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Post extensions, seven in favor. You have two more, Anthony.
Yeah, I was...
Are you on tonight?
Yeah, I'm on tonight. Um, Brown Development Corp.
Number 21, Brown Development Corp, 259 Major's Path, North Sea.
Yep, we did an approval for this one, and they're still just trying to get their final maps to me, so this would just be an extension of time to submit the final maps from November 6, 2023, until February 4th, 2024.
February what?
Four.
February 4th, 2024.
Lots of twos and fours.
Yes, okay. So, uh, motion for the extension?
Motion.
By Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Post extension, seven in favor. And then you've got 22, Anthony, your last.
Uh, yep, um, so 32 Hill Station Road, if you remember this property, some of the board members...
Yes.
This goes way back, uh, actually even had a final approval for a three-lot subdivision.
This is the funny angle?
Yeah, this is the, the, the interesting one here. I actually met with the applicant yesterday, uh, finally, so, um, he asked for an extension until, next week, actually, which I actually put it on the agenda, so it's November 16.
So it's an extension to November?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, sixteen. Okay, motion? Motion by Kate, second by Gloria, all in favor.
Aye.
Post extension, seven in favor.
And just real quick, uh, Jackie, uh, I'll be here tonight with Seth Race, he's our new planner, actually, that I didn't... Seth, you come from the building department?
Yeah.
Has anybody left there?
No, I, I felt terrible, I said, I don't hang out with applicants during the meetings.
Yeah, I was wondering who we're, who we're buddying with.
Pleasure to meet you all, look forward to working with you.
Same.
You got a taste of, uh, what we go through.
I did, a lot.
Okay, well, welcome. Teresa, you're 20, number 20, 2297 Montauk Highway, Bridgehampton.
Uh, this is a pre-submission conference application, it is, uh, complete, and I am recommending that a public hearing, or a pre-submission conference be held. Um, initially I had recommended the 11th.
Is this the Farrell parcel?
It is, yes. Um, and so we're recommending a pre-submission conference hearing on, uh, January 25th.
It's complete?
Yes, it is.
So, and construction, oh, of another office building?
Of an office building and accessory apartments.
Right, have they given you elevations?
They did, would you like to see them?
Yes.
Haven't we seen this before?
Yes.
A bunch of times? Okay.
Well, no, we've seen, he's done the same thing, in, uh, right down the street.
Okay.
Moving east.
Yeah.
He had the original building, then he built a twin of that building.
Yes, and now this is west of that.
And now this is west of that.
Okay.
It's a clear lot.
The one next to it is Saunders', I think.
Saunders', right, yeah. They took this down in two hours, they took down a beautiful house.
This is the proposed office building. It's a two-story office building.
Five stories.
And then these will be the accessory apartments, which will be on the rear of the lot.
So two separate buildings.
Two separate buildings.
That was it, that's in the rear?
That would be in the rear, yes. So that larger building, it would be approximately where this building currently is, or partially where it was, and then the accessory building with, uh, with the accessory apartments would be back here, closer to the existing adjacent residential parcels.
Is that Church Street?
Yes.
Yes, church.